Morrison, and I am the Warden of the County and the Chair of this committee, Public Hearing Number One, dealing with Whitman Cemetery Company in South Williamston. Now, the purpose of a public hearing is to permit members of the public to make their views known to council via oral submissions concerning solely, only, and nothing but the application before council. This public hearing has been called in accordance with Section 15 of the Nova Scotia Heritage Property Act. At the end of the public hearing, the public hearing will be closed, and council will convene Public Hearing Number Two, TUTSWIP. Before municipal council agrees to include a property in the Annapolis County Municipal Registry of Heritage Properties, a public hearing is held where the registered property owner is given the opportunity to ask questions of council regarding the heritage registration. The sole purpose of this public hearing is to discuss heritage registration of the Whitman Cemetery Company, which is requesting municipal heritage property registration for 6878 Highway 201 in the community of South Williamston, PID 05123609, more commonly known as the Whitman Cemetery. Council also uses this time to explain what heritage registration means and to ensure that the property owner is aware of and in complete agreement with the registration of the property as a municipal heritage property. All questions and comments throughout the public hearing are to be addressed to the Chair, and if you forgot, that's me. We'll now call upon the staff. Ms. Lynda Bent, for a presentation, please.
Good afternoon. Thank you for joining us this afternoon. The Whitman Cemetery Company made application to register the cemetery in South Williamston as a municipal heritage property. The property itself, during the evaluation, scored 82 points out of the 100 that were available, and is considered to have historic significance not only to the community of South Williamston, but to the surrounding communities as well. The Whitman Cemetery property was established in 1783. I'm just going to go through a few highlights from the report. The property has historically been known as the Church Lot since 1783, and once housed the Valley West Meeting House. The Meeting House sat on the flat ground near the road and was an imposing 40 by 60 building that served the communities of South Williamston, parts of Niketaw, Lawrence Town, and Ingleseville. The property, the area during this time, was known as Pleasant Valley, and references to the name can be found in deeds to this day. Unfortunately, with the establishment of other Baptist churches in Ingleseville, Niketaw, and Lawrence Town, the need for the Valley West building was no longer required because they built new churches in those communities, and the building was removed. A portion of that building was moved to the Chris Road? Was it Chris Road? To a private property there, my apologies. The cemetery property is sit, sits in a beautiful location surrounded by well-kept lands and many mature trees. At one time, according to local history, there was evidence of old willow trees near the site of the former Valley West Meeting House, which some feel were planted by the Acadians. Whitman Cemetery is more than just a burial ground, it is a historic repository that offers insights into the lives and legacies of the area's early settlers. Its preservation is crucial for maintaining the cultural heritage of South Williamston and ensuring that future generations can connect with their local history. It should also be noted that not only does the Whitman Cemetery recognize several prominent local families, Whitmans, Cunningham's, Bardos, Banks, Beals, et cetera, it also includes graves of local veterans from various conflicts, including the First and Second World Wars. There is a memorial on site dedicated to these heroes. With discussions with the provincial heritage coordinator, it's not uncommon for municipalities to register cemeteries as a heritage property. The Whitman Cemetery is a key historic landmark in South Williamston, reflecting the area's past through its gravestones and monuments.
We now have acknowledgement of the property owner by me with the representatives of the Whitman Cemetery Company. Heritage registration is a legal process enabled through the Provincial Heritage Property Act, by which the Whitman Cemetery Company property is deemed to be significant to Annapolis County by being identified for its historical and cultural value. The identification process is called registration, which in itself is a legal device that offers protection against substantial alterations or demolition of a registered heritage property. Operationally, then, an encumbrance by way of the notice of registration is placed on the property and registered in the Registry of Deeds. Thus, any substantial change to the exterior of the property, such as removal of headstones over 100 years old, of a registered heritage property requires the approval of Annapolis County Municipal Council before any work is begun. Do you acknowledge, understand, and accept these conditions of municipal heritage registration?
Yes, I do.
And do you have any further remarks you would like to make?
Well, I'm very pleased to be here today, and I serve on the board of the Whitman Cemetery Company. My name is Sheena Charlton. I'm the secretary, and I'm here with Sharon Leonard. She's our president. And we look forward to being able to apply for government grants to restore as many of the older headstones as we can. Some of them are in great need of repair, and so we're looking forward to that.
So are we.
Thank you. Thank you for your consideration and your time, and I'd like to thank Lynda, who's been very helpful to me in this application process.
Thank you. We now call for oral presentations by members of the public, limited to five minutes. We will now move to questions or comments from members of County Council.
Right here.
Councillor Gunn.
I just want to thank you for keeping your group together and looking after it as such a landmark for us, and that your heritage is very important to this county. I want to thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Longmire, followed by Councillor Connell.
Thank you again, just as Councillor Gunn has said. Thank you, you and your board, for caring so deeply for these special places. Without you, how would we continue on to know where these bodies lie and rest, right? And it's so important for families and for the legacy of our county.
Thank you. Councillor Connell, please.
And I want to say thank you for bringing that forward. A lot of community names, a lot of community ancestors are there. I know that the cemetery has been taken care of very well. I was up there myself and did some work for the committee a couple of years ago there, and it's nice to see that it wasn't let go to the point of having to really look and see what you could fix and what you couldn't. It was taken care of at the best of time and reserved, and I know that a lot of our family in the Ingleseville area and stuff are, some are there, and it's nice that the community has got a group such as yours. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Robb, please.
Messy, messy for being there. We see quite a few generations of our families back in that cemetery, and it takes a whole organization to be able to take care of such a nice place that they need to have. And hopefully, with what we're doing here today, it will certainly give you the chance to get the government grants that you need to continue such great work that you have already been doing for us and our ancestors. Messy.
Thank you. Councillor Sheridan.
Mr. Penn already said, Diane stole my thumb under there. I was going to say thank you very much, and good luck with your grants. The cemetery is a big one.
Thank you.
Deputy Warden Redden. Thank you. It's your two doors down from me, and it is a lovely place to have Jason to us for everything. Thank you.
Additional comments from Ms. Ben.
So I'll just give you the next steps in the process. When the public hearing is complete, council will add an item to the agenda, and if affirmation, would make a motion to include the Whitman Cemetery Company property in the Annapolis County Municipal Registry of Heritage Properties, and deposit a notice of registration in the Registry of Deeds. This notice of registration provides the description that is not to be demolished or the exterior altered without municipal approval as part of that review. The Heritage Advisory Committee is required to be consulted, and council may grant or refuse or attach conditions to the demolition or the substantial alteration. Substantial penalty may be sought, and the municipality has the right to apply to the court and ask for a fine and a reinstatement order.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. That concludes our business with this item, and we will now move to Public Hearing Number As I have said before, the purpose of a public hearing is to permit members of the public to make their views known to council concerning solely, only, and specifically the application before council. And at this public hearing, we are dealing with the Upper Clements Secondary Planning Strategy and Land Use Bylaw. All questions and comments throughout the public hearing are required to be addressed to the Chair. The Chair will provide an opportunity for public input, and will ask that persons speaking identify themselves and their organization and their location, so that their comments may be recorded in the minutes of these proceedings, and that the persons speaking identify if the remarks are in favor of or against the application. Questions and comments from council members will be held until all public comment is heard, and all questions and comments throughout the public are to be addressed to the Chair. I will now ask Lynda Bent for an information report, please.
Certainly, thank you. So I'm just going to go through some highlights that's in the report. The effective date of the current Upper Clements Secondary Planning Strategy and Land Use Bylaw is dated 1998. According to the Municipal Government Act, the minimum planning requirements regulations state that any municipal planning strategy or land use bylaw that is older than 10 years, it must go through a review process. This is not the first, of course, this isn't the first Upper Clements plan, this is actually the third revision to this plan. There was one in 1993 and the current one in 1998. The Upper Clements Area Advisory Committee commenced the plan review in late 2021, with final draft documents being prepared in May of 2024. A public information meeting was held on May 15th at the Clements Port Legion to review the changes to the planning documents and respond to public questions. Forty members of the public attended the event, and several other members of the public reaching out to staff via phone and emails. Leading up to this stage, the Upper Clements Area Advisory Committee, at its May 2024 meeting, recommended to PAC that the draft documents be approved, and a PAC meeting was held on July the 10th in the Upper Clements Community Hall. As stated above, the Upper Clements Area Advisory reviewed all the comments and concerns with staff, which resulted in amendments that were outlined below and highlighted in the SPS and the LUB. We sent the documents to the province for their pre-review, and they made some changes, recommended some changes to the agricultural lands. We updated the R1 zone to permit two-unit residential dwellings to facilitate density, elimination of the R4 zone that was in the previous document as it was not ever utilized, created mobile home parks by development agreement or development permit has been eliminated, and updated language has been added to include mobile home parks as land leased communities. Added an open space zone to accommodate parks, trails, and open space areas. Added the agricultural zone to protect agricultural lands. Similar to the countywide plan, a limited variety of permitted uses were allowed in the AG zone. Development by development agreement is now restricted to the UCDD zone, the Comprehensive Development District, and this was designed for the former theme park property. New documents speak to wind power large scale in the countywide plan is in the identified areas in mini scale, subject to the land use bylaw regulations. The water core setback was increased from 15 meters to 30 meters. The existing land use bylaw did not allow accessory buildings prior to a main use. The new documents allow that. The Upper Clements R1 zone permits only one main building, but does allow for secondary suites. All other zones allow for more than one main use as well. Sign provisions have been simplified. Provisions for homes for special care, small option homes and group care facilities in all residential zones has been added. The LUB updated to prevent RV parking sites. Recreational cabins, one recreational cabin permitted per lot in the R1 zone and in the R2 zone as well. Couple of the things that staff discovered after the public information meeting and the PAC meeting was after a review of all of the minutes of area advisory, should be noted that staff discovered that it was the intention of the Area Advisory Committee to include mobile homes and recreational vehicle parking sites. It had been omitted from the list of permitted uses. It has since been added. That was their intent all along. And I believe that concludes my overview of the report.
Thank you. I'll now call for oral presentations from the floor. First call for comments against the application.
I didn't sign up, but...
Please.
Just about...
You are...
Oh, sorry. Emily Carcom, Grand Ole Beach, HAUGHM. Just the comment about the one recreational cabin per block. The Upper Clements isn't my district, but I know in our district for the habitation zone, that was...
Excuse me, we are here to discuss this.
Okay, so I believe that you should be allowed to have more than one recreational cabin, especially where the definition describes it as a bunkie or a camp. It doesn't decipher the size of the property. You should be able to have more than one.
Thank you. Second call for comments against the application. Third call for comments against the application. First call for comments in support of the application. Second call for comments in support of the application. And you know what's coming next. Third call for comments in support of the application. Questions and comments from council members.
Craig, please.
Please, yes.
Okay. Quite fancy. I live in Upper Clements. I also have a woodlot in Upper Clements, and I wanted to ask if the present zoning is that there are no shooting ranges. I would like to somehow make an application to have a change so I can have a shooting range on my woodlot. I can't do anything, can't move forward until the county, whether it says I can have one or can't have one. I shoot YPSAC, International Practical...
Sorry, you shoot?
YPSAC. It's a type of shooting, sports shooting. The closest place for me to go is Halifax. I used to have one over at the foot of Parkamattan Road that they had close. I enjoy it, but the trip to Halifax to practice is costly. If I could practice in my back woodlot, I'm not looking for anything public. I just want to do it myself and me and my kids and my folks. Okay? Again, I can't do anything until there has to be zoning for it. Is that enough?
Thank you. Questions and comments from council members, please.
I have a question about that.
Councillor Connell.
So if it's not going to be open to the public, does a person have to have permits to have something like that on the property?
I believe it's a provincial requirement that he needs a letter of zoning confirmation in order to get his license through the provincial government.
I just wondered, because I would ask it on any zone. I just, I thought if you owned it personally and you didn't allow public in, what stops me from going out in my backyard and firing off a gun sometimes?
The ARCP stops that.
Yeah, well, we don't have to worry about that. They don't show up.
Councillor Gunn.
Thank you so much. I didn't realize this when I went over to, it was one of the issues that I had a problem with, another matter we're going to deal with later, but was the shooting range. There's more than Mr. Fancy here that liked to shoot guns, and for years, I didn't know it was illegal in Upper Clements to shoot a gun. My God, I went up in the gravel pit, and we set targets up, and we shot, and doing it for years, you know, and we never thought anything of it. You know, it's actually quite shocking to know that there's a zone out there, you know, where we're zoned, so that I can't go up in the back end of my land a couple of miles and shoot into a bank of dirt. Because of why? The noise? Is that it in the daytime? Well, an excavator bucket makes more noise than what a gun does a lot of the time. So, you know, I really have to question that one, and that's all I'll have to say about this.
Thank you. Councillor Hudson.
Yes, I guess I just have a point of clarification for myself. When you speak of shooting, is that with long guns or pistols or...?
It would be with both. I enjoy target practice. I also hunt. I don't make it public for people to know that I do that kind of stuff because it's frowned upon in some places, but if there's an opportunity to do both, I would like to enjoy both.
Thank you. Further comments or questions from members of council. Next steps, Ms. Ben, please.
Sure. After the public hearing, if adopted, municipal council is required to hold second and final reading of their intention to adopt the documents, after which four certified copies of the document will be forwarded to the Department of Municipal Affairs and Housing for their approval. Once notification is received from the province, an advertisement will be placed in the local paper notifying the public of their adoption of the documents, and they will be in effect on the date of the advertisement on the municipality's website.
Thank you. I can assure you that all comments will be duly weighed. I now adjourn this public hearing number two, and we move to public hearing number three, Habitation Community Secondary Planning Strategy and Land Use Bylaw. As with, as with the other meetings, the purpose of this public hearing is to permit members of the public to make their views known to council concerning solely, only, exclusively, and specifically the application before council. This third and final public hearing today concerns the Habitation Community Secondary Planning Strategy and Land Use Bylaw. All questions and comments throughout the public hearing are required to be addressed to the Chair in a respectful manner. The Chair will provide an opportunity for public input, and will ask that persons speaking identify themselves so that their comments may be recorded in the minutes of these proceedings, and that the persons speaking identify if they are in favor of or against the application. As before, questions and comments from council members are asked to be held until all public comment is heard, and all questions and comments throughout the public hearing are to be addressed to the Chair. And now I'll ask Ms. Ben for an information report, please.
And again, I will give highlights from the report in regards to the habitation community planning area. In May of 2019, municipal council moved to establish the habitation community planning area, and members of the area advisory were appointed. Due to COVID, we had a few setbacks getting back to the table for its review, but staff were able to put together a draft land use bylaw vision statement goals were released on the county's website in July of 2022. Public engagement, a workshop was held in July of 2022 as well. In June of 2023, an open house was planned by staff, and we presented the draft documents and received additional community feedback through oral and written correspondence. Following the feedback, the habitation community area advisory passed a motion for the draft plan to be sent to council to forward with the adoption process. On October the 5th of 2023, a PAC-sponsored meeting was held at the Lower Granville Hall, and after receiving hearing from members of the public, the PAC voted to send the documents back to area advisory for further review. In November 6th of 2023, habitation community area advisory... In November 6th of 2023, Heritage, uh, Habitation Community Area Advisory met again, and changes to the documents were discussed and made. On November the 30th of 2023, a second PAC meeting was held at the Lower Granville Hall. Members of the community again provided oral and written correspondence stating their support or opposition regarding the planning documents. Again, after hearing from members of the public, PAC voted unanimously to send the documents once again back to area advisory for further review. In May of 2024, the Heritage, I'm sorry, the Habitation Community Area Advisory Committee met at the county office, where staff reviewed the concerns and comments brought forth from the two previous PAC meetings. Area advisory discussed and suggested changes to the documents. The meeting ended with a motion to send the proposed plan with amendments to council to, again, to move forward with the adoption process. A third PAC meeting was held on July 3rd at the Lower Granville Hall. And again, after hearing from members of the public, the PAC voted to recommend that municipal council give first reading of their intention to adopt the Habitation Community Secondary Planning Strategy and Land Use Bylaw. As stated above, the Habitation Community Area Advisory reviewed all comments and concerns with staff. Changes to the documents include, some of the changes included home occupation requirements, change to allow for more than five clients at a time, and to permit a residential accessory building to be used as well. Reduced lot size requirements in the HR2 and the HR3 zone, uh, from five acres to the two and a half acres. The addition of the HR4 zone to permit multi-unit dwellings. Mini and mobile homes were permitted in the R2 and R3 zones. Allowance for one recreational cabin for every two and a half acres of land up to a total of three. Removal of the 30,000 square foot limitation of agricultural building in the HR3 zone, and the addition of a policy in the secondary planning strategy for the ability of commercial zoning in the future, should someone make application for amendment for a compatible commercial operation.
Thank you. We have some folks who registered, and first Emily Clark-Hawn, please.
Okay, Emily Clark-Hawn, Granville Beach. I just wanted to start off by reading section 3.1 in the S P S. The visioning statement states that the plan will promote sustainability and self-reliance through home-based business. Also under section 3.2, under goals, goal number three is to promote self-reliance by encouraging home-based business. Section 4.2.4, under rezoning to habitation residential, it states council shall ensure that no non-conforming uses are created as a result of rezoning. I have been communicating with the planners since 2020 to let them know my intentions to continue to do business and grow my business at the property of 62 Mackenzie Mountain Road. In July, I met with Linda when I realized that no notes had been passed on from one planner to the next, and there was no record of any conversations the planners had with the public, including notes from our public consultation meetings, which were also not recorded. She stated that because we do not have a business under our own names and, or we do business under our own names and not as a registered business, that all the work that we had put into our business did not count as an existing use, and therefore would not be considered when rezoning, including a 1,500 square foot permit in 2017 to build a workshop with residential occupancy. In 2024, permits to build two tiny homes for the purpose of growing our retreat centers slash rentals, which clearly shows development and intention to do business and grow business on our property. We have a tenant who has rented from us for six years. Linda said because his apartment is currently under renovation and he temporarily shares a kitchen, that also does not count as an existing use. Even though the unit is still wired for a kitchen and previous to us living there, the former owners are renting it to a family of four. I would suggest that due to the current housing shortage, amendments be made to section 4.2.5 and 4.2.8, which are the Habitation Rural Residential and the Habitation Rural Agricultural Zone. To add, and double unit dwellings after the words limited to single unit dwellings to allow for an apartment rental within the main unit. Otherwise, this is another instance of the council would be ignoring the statement in 4.2.4, council shall ensure that no non-conforming uses are created at, as a result of zoning. 4.2.12, council feels the existing uses should not be penalized by limitations set about in the MGA for non-conforming use. Council will set up policies that will allow these uses to continue to operate and grow as long as they stay within the original boundaries. Our property is used for commercial use by myself and Lee Baker, and we operate business under our names and do not currently have a business name registered. Although a name has been reserved for joint stocks, this is still a legal way to conduct business in Nova Scotia. This should not mean that we have to be penalized and not allowed to grow our business. We have reached out to Chris McNeil, Linda Brad, Brad Redden, and Lynn Longmire, looking for help as to how to proceed so that we are not limited when it comes to growing our business on our property. The conclusion they came to was for us to apply to be a non-conforming lot after the plan is put through, which would allow for what we have currently, but could not expand on unless we applied later on, as we had planned to. When our law, um, hold on, reread that. For us to apply to be a non-conforming lot after the plan is put through, which would allow for what we have currently, but we could not expand as we had planned to when our law was zoned as mixed when we moved here. By going forward with this plan as it is, you are penalizing us for doing business under our own names, which is, like I said, a legal form of business. I would suggest the council apply the same as they speak of in 4.2.12, to allow our business to continue to operate and grow. 4.2.13, it is the policy of council to recognize all existing non-residential related uses that were legally in existence as of the effective date of the plan and bylaw. And it's also the policy of council that the expansion or replacement of existing conforming uses be permitted, provided that expansion or replacement does not extend past the original outlines. We are told by Brad Redden to come to the meeting not only with a problem, but also a solution as to how the plan could be amended to accommodate us. We asked for guidance from both him and Linda for a step-by-step process we could follow, or suggestions as to what a viable solution would be, but got no response other than being told to wait until the plan passed and apply for non-conforming. The best I can do today is ask that you apply the policies that you state that you have in place, 4.2.12, to account for existing uses on the property when it comes to 62 Mackenzie Mountain Road, and treat our retreat center as a permitted use, not a non-conforming property. I also suggest the removal of, nope, I'm going to stop there, I think. I'd like it to be permitted as a permitted use and not non-conforming, because as a permitted use, it gave us the ability to grow or expand to our lot size, where a non-conforming use is limited to just what we have right now. How much do I have time left?
No.
Okay, I'll get back to someone else.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lee Baker, please.
My name's Lee Baker. I, uh, live at Mackenzie Mountain, 62 Mackenzie Mountain Road. Um, I'm just going to pick up where she left off. I'm not sure where she wanted me to. The land use bylaw 4.16, remove if the owner of the short-term rental lives on or about the property contained the rental unit, to allow for people who may live close, buy, or own multiple properties to still operate as a short-term rental. 4.20, remove no outdoor storage or display within the front yard. 4.5.42, remove up to a max of three on a parcel of land, considering the definition of recreational cabins includes camps or buggies. Remove section 5.1, when subdividing land, a developer is required to provide a.
Five percent.
Five percent dedication of their land to the county for parks and open space purposes or in the levy of land cash equivalent in new addition. I don't know why I'd have to give any of my land to this county, like that's just, I didn't know that was a thing. Just as I was discussing previously about shooting ranges, but I don't know, is that it, other side too? Also in 5.11, remove open space dedication, cash in lieu of land dedication. 5.2 dot one dot two, remove, remove if the owner of the short-term rental lives on the property or on the property abiding the property. Remove 5.2 dot one dot five, the human habitation of an automobile or other motor vehicles with or without wheels. It is common for people to repurpose a bus or trailer for the purpose of inhabiting in a housing crisis. We shouldn't limit the housing. Okay, so, I just have my own issues I want to discuss here. It's kind of silly she couldn't read her whole presentation as if it was very factual and informful, so I, you know, I think I should be allowed my full five minutes. I just want to address the fact that this council has failed us on our property. And we've been told all along, if we participated in the process, which Emily has since 2000, that our property would be grandfathered in and we'd be permitted to, keep shaking your head, Linda, but this is what your planning strategy people in those meetings were saying. But if you're objecting, please tell me what the objection is.
I'm asking you to direct your comments to the chair.
No, I'm allowed to address the, the, the procedure for how this take that says in your own, in your own bylaws. I'm just going to start throwing some people under the bus here. Linda, she works for this municipality, and she has told us that we should continue to disregard the bylaws and operate our business in regard of the bylaws as they are, which to me is ridiculous. A member of this municipality who is a staff and a taxpayer paid by taxpayer should not be advising citizens to disregard bylaws. Okay, um, I should be more prepared here, but I just wanted to speak from my heart. So, I'm disappointed in Brad Redden that I've been working with for the last three months, and when I first brought this to his attention, he told me in a week he would have something back, so I waited three weeks to talk, message him back, and nothing. More meetings with false promises, nothing. Same with Lynn, they've done nothing but stall us instead of making sure that our property was protected. Laugh it up, Linda.
Excuse me?
Laugh it up, Lynn, because this is true. You have not stood up for our property, even.
Will you please stop addressing members of.
I'm allowed to address my, uh.
You are not.
Runs my district?
You will dress. Don't him about. Your remarks.
Sorry.
Don't him. Don't me.
This whole thing is just to show that you guys actually represent standing up for people's properties and stuff. And Emily and I have respectfully participated in this process for four years, only to be led to where we are now, where our property is in jeopardy of like our dream, you know, and, and I, I, I wanted to oppose the, the, the removal of mixed zones itself, but after I looked through and saw what the restrictions are, I had a second heart, because I don't want to live next to a junkyard or an auto body shop that's got 50 vehicles parked outside or somebody who's hoarding outside of their thing. But then I come back from that and I ask myself, well, one man's, what, what, why should I, why should I be preventing another person's goals and dreams and stuff? You know what I mean? And, and I think at some point in time, we all buy properties and we all have to take a gamble, knowing that eventually somebody's going to come along and build something we might not necessarily agree with. Anyways, I'll just end with, I think it would be appropriate, and I've told Brad, we'll stop barking up your tree if you just protect our property, and alls we're asking to be, to be satisfied with the plan that you guys have is to, to zone our property in something that, something that, uh, allows for us to follow through with the dreams we had. Otherwise, I believe that this municipality is opening itself up to lawsuits that I don't believe in, and I don't want to waste burdens of this county on, but like I'm being backed into a corner where I have no choice but to either fire or do judicial review, or hold this municipality accountable via, via lawsuit. So I'm asking today, before this plan is put forward, that Emily's, Emily's proposition is considered that our property is dealt with prior to this, prior to the, the habitation zone being, being voted in today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Always kind of odd to be on this, this side of the circle, but, um, my name is Gregory Hemming. I live at 3852 Granville Road, and next to the habitation. Uh, and I should, I'm here to speak in favor of this plan. And, and I just want to say beyond that, I mean, that's very simple. I'm in favor of the plan as it's drafted today. But what I want to take just a minute of on that is I am so proud of the staff that has brought us to this point. And I'm so proud of the council that have brought it to this point, because I can tell you, there's nothing more difficult than land use planning, and no one will ever get everything that they want. That's why there is a procedure to amend this down the road, because communities change, people change, the environment changes, the landscape changes. So that's worked into this process. So I'm pleased with it. I was pleased when I was on this side of this, this lecture, and I'm pleased as a private citizen who live in a community that wanted to do this eight years ago. And, you know, I'm concerned about how long it takes, but I'm happy that it's here, and I would suggest that the council support this, because I think it doesn't get any better.
Mike Wayne, please.
I'm good. I'm just going to follow up with her, it's in his hand.
Thank you. My buddy, Stephen Lewis.
Oh, my God. It's not easy. Um, Stephen Lewis, 4940 Granville Road, Granville Beach. We talked about 2019 was when this particular area advisory committee, uh, was enabled, but this actually goes back to 2017. And there was a previous area advisory committee that found that there was so much diverse opinion that it, it recommended to go to a smaller area, which is why there's the habitation Myself and a group of us, unfortunately, three of us, three of the people that are quite instrumental are no longer with us. That's what time does for most of us, for all of us. And, um, we really did go out there. We had a committee, we had people, and of course, then the area advisory committee spoke to virtually everyone, door to door, if, if need be.
Door to my door.
Excuse me, I did come to your door, uh, and three of you came out. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You have to realize this is after seven years, so you have to give, I'm sorry, I'm. But I did come to their door, um, two people came out, then a third came out. So I did, and if, if we did a survey at that point, actually petition, of which two of them signed, and I can't look at them, but they did sign from that same house, so I was there. And what I'd like to, what I'd like to say is that I'm not used to that sort of behavior in, in council. I'm really not. I mean, I, you know, this isn't the United States, this is Canada. It's different. You know, we have some decorum, we have some rules that we, we, we want to follow, you know? And I guess I'll just cap it by saying that Lynn, I thank you very much for your help and all, again, the area advisory committee, but the fact that a few people want some changes, again, that can be done subsequently, and there's process for that. The majority, the vast majority of people in my community want this plan. And I thank council for the reading, first reading, uh, approving it by such a large number. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Those are the folks who signed up beforehand. We can have representation from the floor. First call against the application. Second call against the application. Third call against the application.
Call for verbal oral, or is it show of hands, who's against it? Excuse me.
For oral presentation.
Sword and rupture.
First call in support of the application. First call in support of the application. Second call in support of the application. Third call in support of the application. Comments and questions from council members, please. Counselor Connel.
I just have a question about some of the changes to the document. It says allowance for one recreational cabin for every 2.5 acres up to total of three. Does that mean you got to have 7.5 acres? Or can you have three cabins on 2.5 acre?
Up to three.
You're allowed three on 2.5.
Bear with me for a moment. That's what it sounds like. Pardon me, I can't read. I'm just pulling it up here.
What sections I have? What's written in that one?
Within the HR2 and HR3 zones, one recreational cabin is permitted for every two and a half acres for a maximum of three on a parcel of land. So if you have, if you have 10 acres, you can have two and a half, yeah, you can have three. But you tap out at three regardless of your, of your size. So for every two and a half acres that you have, you can have one recreational cabin.
But the only, one of the big concerns I have, to me recreational cabins is not a lot of difference than recreational RV parks. And we have two recreational RV parks, one in the East End and one in County White Plan. And if you were to go up and look at them, they got approval from Environment to put in a central septic system. So if you're only allowing one recreational cottage or a bunkie or whatever you want to call them, and you're only allowed one on 2.5 acres, you're going to have a hard time trying to put a septic system in that could accommodate three bunkies. Because it's going to be so stretched out, you're going to have seven and a half acres that you're allowed to put three bunkies on to put the, put a big enough septic system in, which is allowable, then it would be hard to place those three bunkies close enough to get the provision, to get the use out of that size of a septic, right? So, so my, my concern is, is that if I was building some bunkies, I'd want to go the extra mile instead of putting in one septic system for each bunkie. I would go spend the money and put in one big septic system that would accommodate all three, right? So that's a little bit of my concern is, is that regulating it the way it is spoken about is going to be costly where these RV park, parks, I know the one in the East End must hold 30 to 50 RVs. And they got a, they got a, a nice little septic system that's approved by Environment. The Den Hands outside of Middleton has just put in a brand new septic system to house RVs. And it'll be more than three, it'll be probably, I don't know how many, but just in my mind, it's going to be costly to try to do it piece by piece where you could do a multiple unit septic system, that's all. And the way it's worked is it would be very hard to do that.
The RV parks in the East End or, or any RV park, those are a commercial campground type facility. The recreational cabins in for the habitation, for example, is more for private use. So for example, I have a, a large parcel and my sister lives in the city and she just wants to have a spot where she can hunker down on the weekends, you know, not in my house, but you know, on, on my property. So the idea was for, for that kind of concept, not for a commercial RV recreational tourist accommodation. It was more for private use.
So anyone that's trying to do a business to have rentals, how would you achieve that with, could you, could you apply for rezoning?
Sure.
And, and explain why you want them included if you're going to, in future years, everyone looks that buys land, and I'm not disagreeing with some of the speakers is that we bought 60 acres and our thoughts are is that someday to have some bunkies or, or small rentals. Is it going to happen overnight? No. But in order for us to do it, we got to be like an RV park. We have to be in consideration of how much we're going to spend and how close we can put those bunkies together. And in my mind, if people, zoning's a very scary thing because I didn't agree with it when I first went on council. But I understand the process and I also understand the process is that there's amendments can be allowed at any time somebody comes forth and puts, puts something out. I encourage my kid that if we're allowed to build three bunkies, do it good. Do the best job you can do because in three years' time or 10 years' time or five years' time, he may come back and say, I want to put another three out. And I think that if something's done good and community minded, that the community will back them. If it's a mess, wrong people staying in your bunkies causing commotion, the community's not going to support that. So, but I still, I still have an issue with, the fact is, is that how you have to achieve a septic system for a bunkie, but in an RV park, we allow it. So we allow an RV park to park side to side, to side to side. And they could put in a system like that, which would be a bit more maybe double of a normal sewer system, but it wouldn't be the same cost if you individually had to do septic systems. And that's my fear.
If I may, sir. So the, so Counselor Connel, the assumption you're making is you're making, if you have multiple lots and you want, you're going to put three on a lot, that you're putting them in different locations, when in reality you could cluster them all on four different lots in a cube together? And so you could still get a mass nine, 12, 15, or whatever units with one central sewer system or one central septic system and not put them up the outskirts of those two and a half acre lots? The, the reason for this is, I mean, the area we're talking about habitation is very rural, or a very residential area, very long, narrow lots. And so once you get above, for instance, three recreational cabins on a lot, it's a commercial business. The same as a campground. Once you typically get more than three campers, once you get four or five, it becomes a campground, which is a commercial business. And so the document does allow, there is a provision put in there that's after all public consultation to allow for future commercial development. So if somebody came along and wanted to put in multiple recreational cabins, they could apply to rezone their particular portion as commercial and apply to do that and could do the number that they wish to do. But that allows for a public consultation process, which is what you're discussing, suggesting? If we don't do that, then it becomes as of right and then people can put them in and it may be a very small lot, it may be very much next to other residential homes, and it may cause some, some friction in the neighborhood. So that's the opportunity here. There's lots of opportunity to make amendments to it, but it would have to be a commercial, be a commercial zone, would have to go through a public consultation process to make sure the community is satisfied and comfortable that that commercial use is compatible with the nature of the habitation area.
See, none of this would be avoided in the-
Quiet, please.
Are you kidding me? I'm going to say this, this is why we're all-
This is council!
Just sit down. Just mind your business. You're the reason we're in this mess.
Counselor Gunn, please.
Thank you very much. I'm not a big fan of secondary plans, everybody knows that, but I mean, you know, I understand the necessity of them in populated areas. One of the things I don't understand, and I like the changes they've had here, I mean, I do like, they're looking more sensible. But I have a one acre lot down in the habitation area and it's a nice little building lot. Had, you know, for quite a while. So this means that this plan goes through, I can't build on that one little acre lot I've had for years. It's already created. I can't build on it?
It's an existing lot, you would be able to, to build-
If it's an existing law, I can build on it.
You can, yes.
Thank you.
As long as it meets the permitted use in the zone that it's in.
Sure, in the R2 or whatever it is, HR2, it's, it's, it's one acre lot's been created. So that's all right.
Right. But go on the go forward, you would have to-
If I recreated that lot, if I had a bunch of fallow farmland and then wanted to create lots off it, then I would have to go to two and a half acre lot.
Have to meet the minimum lot size requirements.
Thank you. Thank you, that's all. And the other thing I noticed in this thing is there is nothing in that area about fallow farmland, you know? And this isn't, this is an area where there's a lot of people and a lot of farmland, but there's nothing about fallow farmland in this document. Maybe there's not, there should be nothing about farmland in it. Don't? Thank you.
Counselor Answell, please.
Thanks. The CIO will actually answer my question.
Further comments, questions from members of council? Counselor Onmeyer, please.
Thank you so much. This group who came together a number of years ago to put together a well thought out plan worked tirelessly at that. And as you can see on the insert to the package, I, I look at the timelines and how many times we went back to the group to study hard again, look at it with a critical eye and respond back to the community and to those in attendance at the meetings, whether they lived in the area or not. We answered their questions. We were intentionally wanting to work with this area. I'm proud of the committee and the work they had done priorly and proud of them for the work that they helped me learn along the way. As I had said before, I knew very little about zoning. I've come to appreciate and respect all of those people around me who had for greater knowledge. I point out Linda and the team of planners and all the staff that helped us navigate sometimes what we consider to be very tumultuous waters. I am so grateful we have arrived here today. I know that it seems as though it doesn't sit with everyone perfectly, but it does give time and space for amendments, a long application to consider for growth in the future. And I did love the words that the citizen Gregory Hemming used, "Communities change, people come and go and they, and they change, the properties take on new ownership." You know, we'll be responsible to that and we do want growth and we do want thriving communities and I feel positive about this plan.
Next steps. After the public hearing, municipal council is required to hold second and final reading of their intention to adopt the documents, after which four certified copies of the document will be forwarded to the Department of Municipal Affairs and Housing for their approval. Once notification is received from the province, an advertisement will be placed in the local paper notifying the public of the adoption of the documents and they will be in effect on the date of the advertisement on our website.
My closing comments, if I were writing this in another life, I would use these words and I would use them here today. Participants have engaged in a frank and candid exchange of views, all aimed at arriving at a consensus and to the satisfaction of as many as possible. Thank you. We will now take a short recess.
Thank you.
Back to you, first.